Yeah, these are men's glasses. Okay, it is seven o'clock and I'm calling the city council meeting to order. Today is Monday, April 21st, 2025. Would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? If you're able to, please stand. So at this point in time, Councilmember Aguilar, would you please make your request?
Yes. Under the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 54953, Section F211, I request that the City Council allow me to participate in a meeting remotely due to an emergency circumstance. I had an injury and will need to be taking this meeting remotely and am unable to walk.
Okay, I'm going to look down Council Row. Any concerns? Let's go ahead and take a quick vote on this. Do we have a motion to allow him to participate remotely? Councilmember Vivas Walton, so moved. Councilmember Azavito, is that a second? I've got a second. A motion, this is a perfunctory matter, so we're going to go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Aguilar, your vote, please.
Aye.
All votes are in. Motion passes 502 with Councilmember Simon and Bolt absent. Mayor Gonzalez, yes. Councilmember Azavito, yes. Councilmember Vivas Walton, yes. Councilmember Vice Mayor Bowen, yes. And Councilmember Aguilar, yes.
Madam Clerk, would you please take a roll at this time?
Yes. Councilmember Aguilar.
Present.
Councilmember Azavito.
Present.
Councilmember Bolt is absent. Councilmember Simon is absent. Councilmember Vivas Walton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Bowen. Mayor Gonzalez.
Present.
Thank you.
The City of San Leandro conducts orderly meetings to fulfill its mandate, discriminatory statements for conduct that would potentially violate the Federal Civil Rights Act of 1964 and/or California Fair Employment and Housing Act. California Penal Code Sections 43 or 415 are per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. So please see the City Council Handbook and the City Council Meeting Rules of Decorum for more information. Madam Clerk, your announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. If you would like to make a public comment during the meeting, you can do so in person or via Zoom. If you are present at the meeting, please complete a speaker card and submit it to the city clerk before the item is presented. If you wish to participate in public comment via Zoom, you can use the Raise Your Hand tool when the item is called. During the public comment session, speakers will be invited to speak and will have a set time to share their comments. A countdown timer will appear for their convenience, and when the time is up, the microphone will be muted. All raised hands outside of public comment will be lowered to avoid confusion. Once public comment is opened, hands may be raised to speak. There will be a 30-minute window for public comments, which will take place under Item 7, Public Comments, as per the published agenda. After this time is up, the council will proceed with the rest of the meeting's agenda. If you have not had the opportunity to speak during the initial 30-minute period, there will be another chance to do so after Item 12, City Council Reports. Thank you.
At this point in time, we'll do item number three. Is there any report on closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. There were no reportable actions taken in closed session, but direction was provided to staff.
At this point in time, we'll move to item number four, recognitions. Today, we proclaim April 22nd as Earth Day. We've got, I think we've got Hannah Miriam and Yingwei here. Is that correct? Come on up, please. Well, welcome, welcome, welcome to both of you. You can hold that. I'll do, I'll read through this quickly. It's not so very long, and hopefully folks are coming out on Friday. It's Friday, correct? They were meeting at which school where we're planting? The one on Monterey? Monroe. So right there at the park, right there. So please come out and join us as we do a little bit of planting for Arbor Day. So whereas 55 years ago, millions of Americans gathered across the country as part of the Earth Day movement, joined by a common belief that we could, that we should prioritize our planet's well-being, and whereas we saw the passage that year of landmark legislation like the Environmental Protection Act, the Clean Water Act, the Clean Air Act, and whereas the global community continues to face challenges such as health and environmental issues, economic struggles, as well as food and water shortages, and whereas people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, should have the right to healthy, sustainable environment with opportunities for economic growth and prosperity, and whereas we are all caretakers, we're caretakers of our planet, and we have an obligation to combat climate change and environmental degradation, to preserve the earth's beauty and its resources, and whereas it's necessary and proper to broaden and to diversify this global movement to achieve maximum success. Therefore, I, Juan Gonzalez III, Mayor of the City of San Leandro, do hereby proclaim tomorrow, April 22nd, 2025, as Earth Day in the City of San Leandro, and encourage all people in our city to support efforts that address climate change and environmental degradation, to champion clean economy initiatives, and to encourage others to undertake similar actions.
So we're from San Leandro Eco Club, and we both are serving as co-presidents during the 2025 term this year, and we have our fellow officers, Sarah Zhang, our Community Project Manager, and our Recycling Project Manager, as well as Mr. Gordon, our Club Advisor. We are very honored to be here today to accept this proclamation. We understand that youth advocacy within environmental issues is very important as future generations continue to strive for change. So thank you all very much.
Yeah, like Yingwei mentioned, thank you, everyone. It means a lot to us. We're honored to receive this proclamation, and we are very grateful that you guys recognize what we do as Eco Club, and we will, we will do what we do, and we'll try to change the world by, you know, by taking little action. So thank you for recognizing what we do. Thank you.
I was just like grasping for straws, Floresta Park, this Friday at, what time, 4:00 p.m.? I think it's 4:00 p.m. Well, in the announcement section, we'll just confirm the time. Okay, so now we move to our next item, which is the consent calendar. So at this point in time, would anybody like to pull anything from the consent? And if not, feel free to move the consent calendars. Councilmember Vivas Walton.
I'd like to move the consent calendar, please.
And Vice Mayor?
One second.
We've got a motion from Councilmember Vivas Walton, and a second from Vice Mayor. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we have two public comments, one in person and one online.
Please proceed.
Mark Janowitz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, and other city administrators. Thank you very much for the opportunity of addressing it. I'm Mark Janowitz. I'm a homeowner in the City of San Leandro, loving it here, love this town. I'm here to comment on the passage of the rent registry ordinance. It's a great first step. It's a great, small first step. We are looking forward to its incorporation into a larger package of a unified tenant protection, community protection, set of ordinances, including rent stabilization and just cause. As I had read to the council earlier, from, quote, from the California Supreme Court, "These ordinances go together. They all work to support each other and to enhance each other." A couple of comments about the rent registry that is before us, the version that's before us. It can always be improved, of course, and hopefully it will be improved as we go along. Specifically, the exemptions should be limited because the purpose of this is to collect data, so we want to be more inclusive about all the different units that we include, especially those that are subsidized by the federal government. Those are routinely exempted from rent control and sometimes from just cause, even though they are lawfully included under just cause ordinances. But for purposes of this rent registry ordinance and data collection, I think there's a lot of units out there under federal subsidy that we should collect information on. And then the enforcement is also, I think, a little weak, in my view. Jurisdictions around, locally, have had trouble getting cooperation and getting compliance, and so enforcement mechanisms have been incorporated into the ordinance by specifically providing that failure to comply with the ordinance shall be a defense to an eviction brought during the pendency of the failure to comply. Perfectly legal, and it's a great way to ensure enforcement of your ordinance. We're concerned that there might not be enforcement. Thank you very, very much, and thank you for passing this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, we will now go online.
Please proceed.
Douglas Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Nice to speak with you on this lovely evening. Yeah, what he said, I don't want to diminish anything that Mr. Janowitz just said. He spoke it much more articulately than I can, but I do want to remind you, when first this was read and when first you voted on it, there was a lot of interest on the council on doing more than one thing. And I understand, right, the staff does have limitations, but it's almost more exhausting to like do one thing and then we wait a really long time for the next thing. So, you know, whether it's going to be rent stabilization, a cap at 5% or whatever, or a strong just cause ordinance, or protecting tenants from harassment, like what is the next thing that's in the pipeline? That's what I would like to know. I'd like to continue the momentum. I don't think we have to, you know, run a sprint. It is more like a marathon, but we do have to keep running or we, we're not going to get to the finish line. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ginny Madsen, you may unmute yourself.
So hi, this is Ginny Madsen, and I could not, not be here tonight to speak on this. This is not going to benefit renters in the short term. It's not what we need, but San Leandro needs it, because I truly believe that unless San Leandro knows how many rental properties are in town, there are so many things, like a sewer tax, that you will not be able to do. This is important for San Leandro, and it's a first step for other things, but you need to do this for San Leandro. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment.
So with that, I'll close by the comment, come back to council, see if there's any further discussion. And with that, I will move to a vote. We've got a motion from Councilmember Vivas Walton, a second from Vice Mayor, to approve the consent calendar. Please vote.
Councilmember Aguilar, your vote, please.
Aye.
All votes are in. Councilmember Aguilar, yes. Vice Mayor Bowen, yes. Councilmember Vivas Walton, yes. Councilmember Azavito, yes. And Mayor Gonzalez, yes. Motion passes 502 with Councilmembers Simon and Bolt absent.
Okay, so at this point in time, we'll move to City Manager, City Attorney reports. I think we have one, and that is from City Manager, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. Good evening, council members and community members. The City of San Leandro cordially invites you all to celebrate Arbor Day. Join us to promote the value of trees in our urban landscape through an afternoon of tree planting, education, and fun. This will be this Friday, April 25th, 2025, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Floresta Park, located at 3750 Monterey Boulevard. Mayor, that concludes my announcement.
Perfect. At this point in time, let's take public comment. This is a public comment on items that are not on our agenda, that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one public comment in person and no hands up online. Craig Williams?
Hi, my name's Craig Williams. I live right around the corner from here. I've been here for about 30 years. The comment I'd like to make is about the issue of public safety. I've got a proposal for public safety. You know, the media likes to use, they have the slogan, "If it bleeds, it leads," and that's actually, when you think about it, that's anecdotal evidence, because according to the FBI, violent crime is down 15.2%, murder 26.4%, rapes 25%, aggravated assault 12.5%, robberies 17.8%. And my proposal is that it would be very easy for the city to put up digital signs that had this information. You could put this up around town, and you could probably put four or five of them up for like $5,000 or $6,000. You know, you're getting the media making money from the idea of crime, of, of public safety problems, when in reality, you know, it's, you know, crime is actually going down. So you could, you could do a lot in the city in terms of lifting people's spirits, in terms of, you know, getting them accurate information, and it wouldn't cost you that much money. It probably cost you what it cost one police officer for a week, but that's my, that's my suggestion, and I hope you could consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we actually have one hand up online now.
Please proceed.
Douglas Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you very much for recognizing my hand. I also wanted to talk about, just for, for a moment, about, about crime data. What Mr. Williams says is absolutely true about the current data. I fear that actually the crime rate may well go up, because what historical data shows this is that the crime rate tends to follow the economy. It's kind of the inverse of the economy. So as the economy does worse, you know, crime gets worse. So given the current situation, I would not be surprised to see the crime rate actually inch up. Okay, so what did I want to talk about? I wanted to talk about, just keep our eyes on the ball in terms of racial differences for reasonable stops made by the San Leandro Police Department. This is data that was brought to the Community Police Review Board, but not actually discussed due to some other issues about the Brown Act and whatnot that had to be talked about. But this, this data has been around for a long time, and it shows very clearly that the demographic of African-American drivers are stopped much, much more frequently and disproportionately to their percentage as a total population. And just the opposite is true of Asian-American drivers. So in the, in the presentation that was made, I have to say, it was, it was a little strange to read about, well, is this really a true thing, or maybe it's not a true bias, and we can look at gender disparity, and a lot more men are stopped than women. Well, actually, yeah, that's because most police officers believe that men are more likely to create crime. And then there was a thing about visual night versus day, and they figured out that actually the numbers are the same, night and day. That's not terribly surprising, and nor do I think it would maybe matter, because I think actually you can figure out what the race of the driver is at night. And San Leandro has a history as a sundowner town. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment.
Okay, so at this point in time, I just did want to let one of our public speakers know that we have spoken at State of the City about how our crime statistics are better than the national averages. Crime is down even more, and we are working through the Public Information Officer's office to be promulgating that information to help make sure that all residents understand that the significant investments that we've made are paying off. With respect to the second speaker's comments, I may offer some comments during the items of interest at the end of this meeting, because I think there's some misunderstanding about some information. At this point in time, we will move to item number eight, which is our public hearing. And so for the benefit of the public, we will be having multiple hearings on this topic to gather input from the public so that we can make an informed decision that reflects the interests of the public here in San Leandro. Please, at this point in time, don't be surprised if you don't get a lot of discussion or banter from council members, because we're going to be hearing this over and over and over and over, and then there will come a time when we will do some deliberation on what we choose to do next. But at this point in time, I am going to go ahead and have our clerk, Kelly Clancy, present this item.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I want to start tonight by letting you know we're going to be discussing the public hearing number one for community input on the city council districts to be established for district-based elections beginning in 2026. This is the public hearing timeline. Tonight is the first public hearing, and there are set to be four public hearings in which the council is to receive public comment, but no action is expected to be taken, so you will notice there is no resolution or ordinance attached to tonight's staff report. The second public hearing will be May 5th. We will have a third public hearing on May 19th, and the fourth and final public hearing to receive public comment on this item will be June 2nd. And then June 16th, it is anticipated that the city council will take action and adopt an ordinance that evening. For outreach on this item, there is planned and ongoing outreach. The city clerk's office has created a website that you can find by going to sanleandro.org/votbydistrict. The city clerk, myself particularly, have been sitting in a booth at the farmer's market, so I hosted a booth last Wednesday, April 16th. I'll be there next Wednesday, April 30th, Wednesday, May 14th, and also Wednesday, May 28th. We will also be following up with
Thank you very much for recognizing my hand. I also wanted to talk about, just for, for a moment about, about crime data. What Mr. Williams says is absolutely true about the current data. I, I fear that actually the crime rate may well go up because what historical data shows us is that the crime rate tends to follow the economy. It's kind of the inverse of the economy. So as the economy does worse, you know, crime gets worse. So given the current situation, I would not be surprised to see the crime rate actually inch up. Okay, so what did I want to talk about? I wanted to talk about, just keep our eyes on the ball in terms of racial differences for reasonable stops made by the San Leandro Police Department. This is data that was brought to the Community Police Review Board, but not actually discussed due to some other issues around the Brown Act and whatnot that had to be talked about. But this, this data has been around for a long time and it shows very clearly that the demographic of African-American drivers are stopped much, much more frequently and disproportionately to their percent, their percentage as a total population. And just the opposite is true of Asian-American drivers. So in the, in the presentation that was made, I have, I have to say it was, it was a little strange to read about, well, is this really a true thing? Or maybe it's not a true bias and we can look at gender disparity and a lot more men are stopped than women. Well, actually, yeah, that's because most police officers believe that men are more likely to create crime. And then there was a thing about visual night versus day and they figured out that actually the numbers are the same, night and day. That's not terribly surprising and I, nor do I think it would maybe matter because I think actually you can figure out what the race of the driver is at night. And San Leandro has a history as a sundowner town. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment?
Okay, so at, at this point in time, I just did want to let one of our public speakers know that we have spoken at State of the City about how our crime statistics are better than the national averages. Crime is down even more. And we are working through the Public Information Officer's office to be promulgating that information to help make sure that all residents understand that the significant investments that we've made are paying off. With respect to the second speaker's comments, I may offer some comments during the items of interest at the end of this meeting because I think there's some misunderstanding about some information. At this point in time, I, we will move to item number eight, which is our public hearing. And so for the benefit of the public, we will be having multiple hearings on this topic to gather input from the public so that we can make an informed decision that reflects the interests of the public here in San Leandro. Please, at this point in time, don't be surprised if you don't get a lot of discussion or banter from council members because we're going to be hearing this over and over and over and over. And then there will come a time when we will do some deliberation on what we choose to do next. But at this point in time, I am going to go ahead and have our clerk, Kelly Clancy, present this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I want to start tonight by letting you know we're going to be discussing the public hearing, number one, for community input on the city council districts to be established for district-based elections beginning in 2026. This is the public hearing timeline. Tonight is the first public hearing and there are set to be four public hearings in which the council is to receive public comment, but no action is expected to be taken. So you will notice there is no resolution or ordinance attached to tonight's staff report. The second public hearing will be May 5th. We will have a third public hearing on May 19th. And the fourth and final public hearing to receive public comment on this item will be June 2nd. And then June 16th, it is anticipated that the city council will take action and adopt an ordinance that evening. For outreach on this item, there is planned an ongoing outreach. The city clerk's office has created a website that you can find by going to sanleandro.org/votebydistrict. The city clerk, myself particularly, have been sitting in a booth at the farmer's market. So I hosted a booth last Wednesday, April 16th. I'll be there next Wednesday, April 30th, Wednesday, May 14th, and also Wednesday, May 28th. We will also be following up with social media posts on Facebook and Instagram. We have published the same media posts that we'll be posting online in the newspaper. You can find it in the San Leandro Times. It's been published in the Daily Review, Vision Hispania, and Singtao. And we also have a translation and, and interpretive support available by request at city council meetings. Here's a brief overview of the front page of our city clerk website for district elections. It went live on April 14th and the content provides an in-depth information about the process and how the community can get involved. We have a section on FAQs. We have a page on the district map. And then we have a whole section on how you can contact the city clerk's office if you would like to make comments or have suggestions. We have some options in which you can share your thoughts with the city clerk's office. You can share your city, your comments in person at council meetings, public hearings, the farmer's market. I've been bringing speaker cards so you can fill those out in advance and have them ready if you would like to bring them to a public meeting. You can always call the city clerk's office on the phone or we are available online by email and on the website. You have a whole form that you can fill out or you can just submit an email. And that is all I have for tonight. No action is expected to be taken. The intent of the evening is to just hear comments from the public. Thank you.
So prior to opening the public hearing, are there any questions from council members? Looking online to see if Councilmember Aguilar might have his hand raised. I do not see that. So we will, at this point in time, move from the question section of this. It's 7:24 and I'm opening the public hearing. We will take our first speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have four public speakers in person and three hands up online.
Let's take online first, please.
Okay, we will go online first.
And please, if you're online, please raise your hand. So we will.
We have a couple of hands, more hands up now.
Okay, let's take those five hands, please.
Okay, thank you. Carol, you may unmute yourself.
Good evening. Good evening, City Council. This is Carol Habercos. I'm speaking for district elections. I have a couple of points I want to make and this comes from the National League of Cities. This is a comment about at-large elections. All at-large members are elected to serve the same constituency, which is the population of the city as a whole. However, at-large elections can weaken the representation of particular groups such as people of color, especially if the group does not have a citywide base of operations or is an ethnic or racial group concentrated in a specific ward. District elections give all legitimate groups, especially those with a geographic base, a better chance of being represented on the city council, especially communities of color. District council members are more tuned to the unique problems of their constituents such as crime levels, small law development, trash pickup, potholes, and recreational programs. And district elections may improve citizen participation because council members who represent a specific district may be more responsive to their constituency. So I wanted to add those comments. I am for district elections for the City of San Leandro. Thank you.
Thank you. Mimi Dean, you may unmute yourself.
Good evening. I am speaking as myself tonight, Mimi Dean, citizen. I just wanted to say I too am in favor of district elections. I'm in favor of them for many reasons. Well, first of all, to not have them is a violation of the California Voting Rights Act. And we, another big reason for me is we all know that we need to get money out of politics. We know what happened federally with all the money in politics and we know that people being able to run in their districts is a better deal than big money running campaigns. I think that San Leandro City Charter does not supersede the state law and lots of other communities surrounding us, as well as other agencies surrounding us like Hayward Rec, the City of Hayward, they have moved to district elections because they know it's the right thing to do. They, I was at all those meetings and I watched them making those maps, especially Hayward Rec. They struggled over 40 maps to begin with and they narrowed it down to one that really made it so people could be represented in their communities, especially people of color. So I think district elections is really the right thing to do and I know that the City of San Leandro always wants to do the right thing and do what's best for their community. So I'm urging you and I'm calling on the city council to work really hard to build consensus and to put forth district elections in the City of San Leandro. Thank you so much for listening to me. I really appreciate you. Good night.
Thank you. Jackie Props, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, my name's Jackie Props. I'm a 13-year resident of San Leandro. I too support district elections and urge every member of council to move to bring San Leandro out of the redlining days because having to campaign over the entire city maintains a status quo where only people who are rich enough can afford to run and that's not representative, representative democracy. That's not how our system is supposed to work. So thanks for your time. I appreciate your focus and time and moving forward on creating district elections and not thinking that, you know, you can go beyond, be above the law. But I'm, I'm getting really tired of that with our federal administration. I, I don't like to see it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan S., you may unmute yourself.
Good evening, City Council neighbors. I am Susan Sandoval. I've lived in San Leandro for 16 years. I support district elections. Diversity Voices actual residents will now have the opportunity to make sure their voices are heard. This allows us, the citizens, to vote on people that we're familiar with throughout our community. This is our community. We are the community. We have a voice. District elections, consensus. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Phoebe, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Phoebe Ju. I'm a resident of San Leandro for over 10 years and also a proud elementary school teacher in the San Leandro District at Jefferson and Washington. And I'm just here today to agree with my fellow neighbors saying that I support district elections. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Christopher Bamer, you may unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name's Chris Bamer. I've been a resident in San Leandro 25 years. My family's owned a business since 1977. I support district elections. I would also like something to be looked at is can we vote on getting rid of the ranked choice voting? Is that in the same discussion as this one? I've brought it up before. I've heard other people bring it up before. Ranked choice voting along with district-wide elections, I'm, I'm in favor for. So I'd like to see if we could look into getting rid of the ranked choice voting also. Thank you.
Thank you. Douglas Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. It's good to hear Chris Bamer's voice back on these meeting airwaves. I, I know that ranked choice voting is not under question. I am another person in favor of district elections. I think we have a fairly representative council, but I think one, one thing is that we could have a, a really much more representative candidate pool running for elections and, and most notably in terms, not, not necessarily in terms of race, but in terms of class. I think the money deal is, is a barrier to many, many, many candidates, potential candidates that would be running for office. So I, I'm just a little curious what's happened since we last met. I see the, the page went up and it seems like from the city's perspective, we're, we're meeting from the page that San Leandro is making a change in how voters elect its city council. Beginning in 2026, voters will vote for one council member losing the district. This will replace the current system of at-large election seems pretty clear and declarative. And I noted that you all voted unanimously last time out for this. I think you see the handwriting on the wall too, that it just is the law. The California Voting Rights Act requires district elections. I mean, it just is how it is. But, but I am concerned by some of the comments and behavior. For example, I'm reading my copy of the San Leandro Times where the reporter asked, "What would happen if city voters rejected a move to district elections?" Bulatow and others believed the city would, would be violating the, the California Voting Rights Act. But the mayor said it was Bulatow who should be asked what his reaction would be if the latter were to happen. Seems there's a lot of animosity towards Mr. Bulatow. I think people are resentful of, of change. And, you know, I, I heard back from the, from the, the farmer's market on Wednesday. I don't know if it was the city manager or the city clerk, but somebody was talking all about Mr. Bulatow, not about the, the district elections, but about his role in making this happen.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment?
Okay, so we'll close online public comment and come here into the chambers.
Deborah Lopez?
Hello, everyone. I'm Deborah Lopez. And I just want to let you know that I've been here since 1964 and I've seen a lot. I am in support of the district elections. In 2001, California passed California Voting Act to address concerns that at-large election systems were preventing fair representation for certain groups. It protects racial and language minority groups from election systems that dilute their voting power, focusing on Latino, Black, Asian-Americans, and Native Americans, as well as others that speak another language. I have noticed other cities adapt, oh, I have noticed other cities adapt, especially Berkeley, of which I really pay attention to because if they don't like something, they have a big activist group and they bring it all out and they've accepted it. I understand Union City has too. Now, we have many areas that have changed and our Asian community has grown as well as others that are moving here. Number's increasing. District voting doesn't stop city council members from helping other areas, but it does let those people that live in their area pick who they want as a council member. People that live in a district five shouldn't really care about who's going to be in district three. We have, you know, we need to let people know that district, that they're in favor of district of voting because they picking their own council member might bring out more voters, might bring out more candidates and show the people that we care of their area. It's fair and you may find more people coming out and running for office. And it's also important to note that the Voting Rights Act was signed in the beginning in 1965 by President Johnson and Congress later amended the act five times to expand its protections of the different people. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Williams?
I, I am also in favor of district elections. I worked for a political direct mail company called Winning Directions 30 years ago. And my job was to talk to local candidates, city council candidates and town after town after town. You know, you get these really sad stories about running for office because they were running in at-large elections. They couldn't afford to run. They couldn't afford to compete, you know, and this has been going on for years. We, we've had 80 cities in California which have changed to district elections. I don't think any of them have changed, changed back and, you know, it's really something that, you know, it started in the South with keeping the black vote down in cities where over half the population was black, yet they had no representation. So, you know, it's something just on a racial level that we should consider changing. The second thing is I think that in San Leandro, we have the highest sales tax in California. And I think we were, they were able to raise that sales tax because we didn't have district elections. The candidates weren't responsible for people in the district, but, you know, as a result, we ended up with this, like I say, the highest sales tax in California and I think that the two are interrelated. And the third thing I'd just like to mention is, you know, is there any sort of dark money involved in this campaign? There's a great series going on and on HBO called The Dark Money Game and everybody should watch that. But, you know, I hope there isn't any dark money. If there's people on the other side of this issue, you know, they should, you know, come out and, you know.
Robert Bulatow?
Hello, hello. I, I know you're all sick of me already, but, yeah, we are not above the law. For years, the city has known that our at-large voting violates the California Voting Rights Act. Rather than address it with the urgency that it required, the city sat, sat on their hands. This is about representation and accountability. As I've said in previous interviews and chats with some of you on the city council, we can literally be sued for millions of dollars for committing this level of disenfranchisement. My goal is to elicit this change without costing us millions of taxpayer dollars. You all know that this is a million-dollar gamble and as, as stewards of our taxpayers' money, I find it upsetting that knowing the stakes, the city chose to wait until a lawsuit was filed rather than what was doing what was right, you know, what was smart. I disagree with some of this council sentiment that this effort is undemocratic. The law clearly states that this method of at-large voting is what's undemocratic, not the other way around. Of the many elected officials and hundreds of residents that I have talked to throughout the city, there have been less than a handful that would prefer the current at-large system, mostly those who are or have been elected through it. So you may harbor some resentment towards me for taking action when elected officials chose not to. But remember, that also means that you also harbor resentment for those that want this type of representation. And we can do better because I know we can. And, you know, we don't got to fight. We just got to do what's right for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Leo West?
Well, this is caused by somebody who lost the election that wants to redraw the system as if the race of a person would determine how they vote. The way that people vote in a city council is accordingly to the interest that bankroll their campaigns. We see meeting after meeting, this consent calendar where the issue are cooked up behind the scene and we all we see is a seven-year's vote. We also see now meeting after meeting, less and less council member even bother to show up here. That was not happening before. I thought of this respect for the people of San Leandro. And so when you are going to change one way or the other, you don't touch the interests that are behind them. They take time to go to other cities, to other states and damn the citizens. That's the reality. So Asian representation was claiming. We had an Asian representative when I was living in the mono district, Benny Lee, who was consistently in favor of landlords voting against any proposal of rent control, even the tenant relocation assistance. And now we have an Asian who spends her time going to one. And now we have an Asian who spends her time going to one city, to other states, and neglecting their district.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment?
Okay, so with that, I will close the public hearing. Okay, so continuing on the item, are there any council member questions at this point in time? Okay, seeing none, we will move to our next agenda item. Again, reminding the public that we will be taking public comment for a number of additional meetings. There will be more people speaking and sharing on this, and there will come a day where there will be deliberation amongst council members after we've heard from the public. So at this point in time, we go to item number nine, which is the presentation on from the Downtown San Leandro Community Benefit District, our annual update. We've got Community Development Director Tom Liao, who will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm pleased to introduce San Leandro Improvement Association Executive Director Morgan McRose, and she's here to do her annual update for you all on the Downtown Community Development District. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Morgan.
No, you're going to start the clock with him talking. Okay. Council staff, it's a pleasure to be here. I am so excited to be here. This is my fourth time presenting the accomplishments of the Downtown Benefit District, and I'm the happiest I've ever been. We've accomplished so much, I cannot wait to share it with you. And we will see how this goes. Okay. As you know, we are a nonprofit 501(c)(3), and we have a board of directors. This is an all-volunteer board of very busy people, and we appreciate the time and the talent that each brings to this. I especially want to thank board members who have recently stepped down last year. Bob Jones, who was instrumental in formation of the district and has served on the board since 2013, and Kim Pace, who served since 2018, including three years in a leadership position. I'd also like to thank former councilman Pete Blue, who served as an appointment to the board from the council from 2018 to 2025, and has always been a tremendous advocate for downtown. Our current council representatives are Councilwoman Viverus Walton and the alternate Sue Abouin. And I'm pleased that tonight we have last year's board president, Angel Sweet, and this year's board president, Deborah Cox. I brought along, I want people to understand that our success is based on our team. We have the lowest turnover rate of ambassadors in the entire Bay Area, and that's because we really work hard to make it a great place to work, and San Leandro is a pretty nice place to be. But I also want to introduce Julia Chacon, who's our new admin assistant, who is now doing the heavy lifting for Cherry Festival planning and does our vendor markets. Julia Marquis, who, any graphics you see, any social media that comes from us or for the Cherry Festival, is the talent of Julia Marquis. And representing our ambassador services, Clovis Formunquin is our ambassador lead. And he's got a fan club. For folks at home who aren't familiar with the way benefit districts work, we were established in 2013 under a 15-year mandate, so we need to go out for renewal in 2028. The district was voted upon by parcel owners in the district. The board is comprised primarily of property owners or their designees, and one-third or fewer at-large members. Assessments are determined by the physical measurements of the property, not the value. So while the property value may go up, that doesn't impact the assessments. And single-family residents do not receive services and therefore are not assessed. I think our biggest challenge is, unlike every other district in the Bay Area, our management agreement plan has our annual increase, assessment increase capped at 3% while everybody else is capped at 5%. So we haven't even been able to keep pace with inflation and cost of labor. So that's that's our real challenge. However, we're doing it. As you can see, assessments make up less than half of our overall budget, but thanks to the city's support of the Safety Ambassador Program, generous corporate and city event sponsorships and grants, we're able to provide a really robust program of services to the community. Our programs fall into three broad categories. Sidewalk beautification and order, which includes cleaning and safety ambassadors, planter maintenance, and other public amenities such as tables and chairs, at 61%. District identity and street improvement, which includes special events, marketing, and public art, at just under 30%, and administration, which is less than 11.5% of our overall expenditures. We are able to have carryover last year and in previous years, which is good, because when we do the re-up in 2027 or so, that's a pretty expensive process, so we've been banking money for that. Our cleaning ambassadors work seven days a week, from 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM, removing graffiti and litter, pressure washing the sidewalks, and keeping infrastructure clean. And while our cleaning ambassadors spend most of their time keeping things tidy, they're also cross-trained in de-escalation, and they're available to respond to calls from businesses needing assistance and to check in with our unsheltered neighbors. And you can see all the statistics. They track everything they do with these little handheld devices. So if you see our ambassadors out there on their phone, it's not that they're like, you know, placing bets on whatever online gambling thing there is or anything like that. They're actually tracking their, that's not a good example, is it? You know what I mean. They're doing their job. Our ambassadors are here to help. That's our motto. And we have a terrific team of safety ambassadors, as I said, led by Clovis, who've made a really big impact in downtown for both visitors and merchants. Safety ambassadors are on duty from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM on weekdays and 12:30 PM to 9:00 PM on weekends. Just as our cleaning ambassadors sometimes perform safety services, our safety ambassadors are always busy returning carts, addressing graffiti, and other cleaning tasks on their route when they aren't responding to calls. They're also key to linking outreach workers to our unsheltered neighbors, working closely both with Building Futures and the new Alternative Response Unit. And I frequently receive positive feedback about the ambassadors, and I want to share one from a resident that we received around the holidays. Please share this message with our ambassadors. I've watched you in action over the past several months at Casa Peralta and all over downtown. You treat the unhoused population with respect and dignity and humor while encouraging and supporting good behavior. The other day, I observed an ambassador dealing with three very surly and aggressive teens who kept trying to intimidate him. He must have found them up to no good and artfully moved them out of the Safeway Mall area, matching their body language and threats with a combination of courage and humor and standing up to their loud BS. You've made the downtown area feel safer, cleaner, and support many in need. Thank you all from my heart, and happy holidays to you all. Ellen Muir, LCSW. I, every time I'm out there, I get positive feedback about our ambassadors, and so I really thank the council's ongoing support for this program, because it wouldn't exist without it. Last year, there were more free public events in downtown San Leandro than ever before. Partnering with not-for-profit West Coast Makers Movement, we added monthly themed vendor markets featuring food and artisan vendors, DJs, and live bands. The market attendance varied, with an average of about 800, with the exception of Mexipino, which brought in about 3,000 people. Last year's Cherry Festival was successful with about 20,000 attendees and 200 booths. And this year, we implemented a new online application system to streamline the process, and we received 30% more applications than we could possibly accommodate. So I know this year's going to be better than last, even. We're so excited to organize last year's San Leandro Pride Parade, not Pride Parade, Pride Event. It was the first one San Leandro had that wasn't like a city ceremony. It was received very well, and we look forward to doing it again this year, but bigger and more fabulous than before. Not used to this note thing. We have a YouTube channel, and I want to encourage people to subscribe and smash that like button, as they say. And thanks for giving me 15 minutes, because now I can play our recap video. Understanding events is always best done with visuals. I will say, I think my favorite event last year was It's a Wonderful Night. We had over 7,000 people there that night and zero problems. I have to say, we rarely have any problems in our events, and that has to do with the fact that we have our safety ambassadors there. And the people who show up to our events are there to have a good time as a community. So you can see, we have a full calendar of events for the spring, summer, and fall and The other thing that happened last year is we received a $10,000 grant from the City of San Leandro Arts, Culture, and Library Commission to turn an eyesore into a really beautiful work of art with taking the, what used to be a fountain, and then was a planter in front of IHOP at the corner of East 14th and Davis, into this beautiful mosaic by Christine Pacheco. We also have another lovely video about that, but I don't have time to show it, but you can find it on our YouTube channel. And can we do another one? I'm happy to report that last week, we were informed that the Arts Commission deemed to give us another grant to do a mural here on the garbage enclosure in front of Field Works. I just got to hustle up another $6,000, so I forgot to have extra money in your budget. But I want to point out that this mural is going to be done by our own Julia Marquis, who is a fabulous, she has a BFA from East Bay, Cal State East Bay, and is just a tremendous artist, and we're really lucky to have her. So look forward to that coming this summer. And finally, I'd like to finish up, giving you an update on the Downtown San Leandro Coordinated Safety Camera Program. This was a grant from the city, and we are in the process of implementing it. As you know, things tend to take longer than you ever anticipate, but it's part of a broader safety initiative. So in addition to public safety ambassadors and community engagement, you know, we're implementing this camera program with private, public-private collaboration. And it's, it's not unique to San Leandro. It's all over San Francisco. It's in Oakland. It's down in Hollywood. And I want to assure everybody that the board has adopted strict guidelines on who has access to the video, who can request footage, and how long the video will be kept. While the evidence of cameras preventing crime is scant, because it's hard to, you know, prove something that doesn't happen, forensic video is undoubtedly a powerful tool in investigation, apprehension, and prosecution of crime. So that's, that's the goal with this program. Our pilot locations are going to be at the corner for the parking lot there, Field Works, at Dave's Hot Chicken, and at several locations in the Village. So we were hoping they'd be installed already. I think they're having to work on internet issues, but I would anticipate, you know what I'm not going to say, because I feel like every time I say, it's delayed. But we're working hard on it. We're working hard. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, so what we're going to do at this point in time is we are going to begin, actually, with public comment on this item, if we have any, and then we'll come back to questions, commentary, and exploration. So at this point in time, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two public comments online and no public comments in person.
Okay, please proceed.
Jenny Chang, you may unmute yourself.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I just wanted to say that I think this ambassador program is really, really great. I've had experience of using it. They also do a great job doing the safety escort. I used that about two weeks ago, coming from a library after an event, and I was escorted by Clovis, so I'm giving him a shout out. I know he's in the audience. I can see him on Zoom. Also, my other present thing is, we should expand the ambassador program to other districts, to people in the city. I do notice that there are funding for this, but I don't know what is the issue. The last time I was informed, they were, the city was thinking about putting ambassadors at the Green House marketplace. So I just heard, I just encourage you guys to get that one going, because this is a great program, and it should be expanded out to the rest of the community and not just centered to downtown. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Douglas Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. Well, you know, I love me some, some good art when it's good art. So thank you so much for, for doing that work. I'm scratching my head a little bit, because I keep going by the Hispanic Triangle. I'm trying to figure out what that circle piece of art is, if it's a portal someplace, how do you get to it? Because it's all fenced in, and it's not really facing in a way that welcomes people to our city who are coming in off the freeway on 150th. So, so, you know, I don't, I'm not sure how we make sense of all that. I just, I love this program. I thank you for all the, the events that happen downtown. It really makes San Leandro a happening place. And there is no other more cost-effective program than I think than the safety ambassadors. I think we really have to see it as part of a whole, providing for public safety. It is very effective. And, and I want to, I want to piggyback on what Jenny just said. You know, I'm also remembering that we've talked, or there's been discussion about extending it to the Green House, and I think other areas, too. You know, the Manor, the Bay Fair District, you know, there probably are half dozen or more areas that could benefit from a similar program, and I'd love to see us sink more money into this very relatively low-cost, highly effective program. It just is, it is the right approach. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment?
I'll close public comment on this item and come back to council members for questions or commentary, beginning with Councilmember Resavito.
Thank you for your presentation. And, yeah, you guys, this past year, there's been a lot of great events. I've gone to a lot of them with my families and friends, and I really enjoy it. My question for you is, have you heard any feedback about the sign ordinance with businesses in downtown? Because I'm hearing that in District 2, Guadalajara's and all that. Has it been affecting the businesses in downtown?
I think that, you know, the sign ordinances were not enforced for a very, very long time, and signage really got out of hand. So I was really appreciative to see that the community preservation group was starting to enforce it. I think that there's a lot of confusion, because people didn't know what the ordinance was before the before the hammer kind of came down. So on balance, I think it's really helped the downtown, but there are some unfortunate incidences, particular incidences, that it could have been communicated a little better. But in general, I think it's important that we do have standards. Otherwise, we'll have feather flags just all up and down East 14th Street. And, but yes, some of our downtown ones are scratching their head. They just don't understand it.
Yeah, there has to be some kind of order, but yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So more education, I think, is probably in order.
Okay, yeah, and I just want to say, I think the safety ambassadors are doing a great job, yes. And we definitely need to expand them to the Greenhouse and Bay Fair. We are pushing for that, because we needed more areas of the city.
Yeah, to that point, I neglected to say that the safety ambassador program downtown is a cost-sharing program. So the city pays a certain portion, and the property owners pay another portion. And so that can be a barrier, I think, to other neighborhoods if they can't agree to or don't have the means to do some of the cost-sharing. It's not very, it's like a 95-5% split, but that 5% is not, it's not nothing, right? And then we do a lot of in-kind support of it. And then the other thing I wanted to mention that I neglected to is that one of the statistics we don't track, but I think is really important, is that we, our ambassadors, get calls to help with merchandise recovery from theft in the plaza or in different stores in the downtown. And just yesterday, I think it was Clovis, I think it was you that aided in the recovery of two incidences totaling over $750 at Safeway. So that's another, I wish, if we started tracking the money on that, that would be pretty impressive, too. Yeah.
All my questions and comments.
Thank you. Coming device, Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Morgan, nice to see you again.
See you, too.
Miss being in the meetings. I don't take my daily walks to La Placita anymore, but I always appreciated how impactful the, all of your programming is downtown, but in particular, how responsive the safety ambassadors were to the different needs of the community. I know that La Placita was incredibly grateful, and certainly the parents were as well, to having very responsive from your team in general. So I just, you know, want to give that shout out. I wanted to ask, obviously, this is a presentation about all the great things that you're doing. I'm curious about some of the challenges you see going forward, whether it's to do with the financials, or safety, or whatever else it is. That way, we can kind of get an idea of how we can best support continued success for you.
Yeah, thank you. I do think one of our goals this year, yes, there's the financial challenge. That's always going to be a challenge. I think we could really benefit, it was really fantastic to add a morning safety ambassador Monday through Friday. I think that's the one gap in our programming, is we don't have that on the weekends. And they just are able to accomplish so much and help businesses first thing in the morning. I would say that one of our challenges is, and it's a goal for this year, is really proactively and intentionally getting the word out to our AAPI community in town. And so we really look to, we've looked to Katie Bowman's team over there, and Tom's team in community development to assist with translation services. So that assistance is really helpful. We work with every single department in this city, except for maybe HR. And I have to say, without exception, we get incredible support from each individual department. So passing the word on to those departments to continue to work with us is really helping us address every concern. The final thing I would bring up as a challenge is, summer months are coming, and when the weather is nice, folks come out. And I'm glad we have the Alternative Response Unit coming out and starting to try to address some of our regulars who are problematic. I think a little more coordination between PD and ARU and us would be helpful, so that we can more efficiently communicate what's going on with folks. The sad reality is, there's really no place for these folks to go. Folks who are, who are diagnosed with some kind of mental health and addiction issue. But that's kind of above our pay grade, I think. I don't know, that's a bigger issue. But I think we could be a little more streamlined in how we try to address it.
And in terms of, thank you for that, in terms of folks accessing resources or calling the public safety ambassadors, if something were happening, is it the business owner then that is usually the one reaching out to you? Or is there an effort to let community members who are frequent-
Out there, Altamere, or some different apartment buildings. And before we do that, I really want to make sure that we have the right language cards out there. And then we have to make sure that there's a map of our service area, because not everybody's understanding of downtown is our understanding of downtown. So we're working on that now. Another thing, actually, that the city could really support us with is, it would be helpful for us to put up metal signage with the helpline. Doesn't even need to have the hours, because frankly, we're around most times people are out there. We do have window clings in businesses that have our services number there, or helpline number there. But, you know, I think having actual metal signage where, probably the same poles where they say, you know, keep an eye on your valuables, those ones that community policing has put up, would be a good place for them, yeah.
And then the last thing that I want to add, and it's just a suggestion and a little nudge for next year. I know next month is too hard. With it be, and I mentioned this when I was on the board, but it doesn't surprise me that Mexopino Fiesta brought in like 3,000 people. But obviously, with San Leandro's demographic, and also just the fact that Asian food is very delicious, in my personal opinion. I think that if we could have an ANHPI Heritage Night, or a Night Market, something around food, especially around so many of the businesses that are downtown.
Yeah, we actually have one planned for August. It's called 88 Night Market, and it's because it's August 8th, and that's a particularly lucky number in the Asian community. So the goal is to have Asian food vendors and Asian artisans and entertainment.
Awesome.
Yes, that is. And then also, I've been put on notice, we need to do something for Lunar New Year. Sure.
Councilmember Vivas Walton, please.
Thank you for your presentation, and I think a lot of the success is in no small part because of your leadership. So thank you for your service. I know that a lot of your work is unseen. I know I've worked with you on a lot of constituent-related issues and kind of figuring out relations between neighbors, business neighbors, and folks in the downtown district. So thank you, and then thank you to the board leadership, who's here, past and present. Thank you, and to the staff. I know that there is a lot of unseen labor that we're not seeing in these numbers, that there's people behind these numbers doing the work every day, all day. Our gratitude to all of you for keeping our downtown beautiful. Actually, one of my questions was around your collaboration with ARU with the Alternative Response Unit. So can you tell us a little bit, can you, I just wanted to dig a little deeper into that, particularly around how the, it launched not that long ago. And I know Chief is here. But I just wanted to dig a little deeper in terms of how we can improve the program, particularly in the downtown, with some of the specific issues that you deal with. I know that ARU deals with a lot of other issues. But in your universe, in the downtown, what are some of the most common calls that you work with, the Alternative Response Unit? And how can we be supportive there?
I think our most common call is when folks are pretty drugged out, you know, and laid out. And oftentimes, I don't know if that's self-medicating a mental health issue. I think it is a lot of times. So if someone isn't going to, isn't responsive, we can't, we can't do anything, right? I think when the ARU shows up, they are very patient and able to get them to respond, not always to accept services, but I think that they're in the best position to continue to respond to the same person until they gain that trust. That was the idea with the ambassador program. But our ambassadors, we just don't have the resources to transport, and we don't have, you know, and so it's been nice to be able to call the ARU in those instances instead of PD. I know they've started trying to use the Community Care Court, no, the Care Court. I think we're all finding out how that works exactly, but we've been really lucky to, that they'll accept who we're nominating for that. You know, we have a couple of regulars who are really a danger to themselves more than the community, frankly. The hours are very limited. It's basically four 10-hour days, I believe. Yes, so there's no service Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. And what makes that difficult is people don't necessarily know when to call. I mean, we know when to call, but the general public doesn't know when they're on duty or when they're not on duty. So I think that the hours are just not sufficient.
Thank you. And just shifting over to operations, you mentioned that you're planning for a large investment in 2027 to renew essentially the cost-sharing program, right? The, or not the cost-sharing program, the amount that the businesses would pay into, the renewal.
Benefit district, the mechanism, yeah.
Right. Can you talk a little bit about what that on-ramp would look like? Or are you even there yet, or am I just jumping the gun?
Girl, I'm not there yet. I am, that is one of my tasks this summer, is to find out exactly what that entails. All I know is that when I asked about it from neighboring districts, it was at that time an $85,000 proposition, because I think you have to bring a consultant in and such. I think what we have been focusing on is really trying to raise the visibility of our value to the property owners. But it's very difficult, because a lot of our property owners don't even come to San Leandro. And who knows if they open their mail, and we don't have email addresses, and yada, yada, yada. So I think what that ramp looks like is figuring out how to reach them or get their tenants to reach them and give testimonials as to the value of the district. And then it's a matter of, I think, reassessing the rates, and is that the appropriate rate?
Okay, I'm assuming that that process we do in conjunction with community development, or is it only run through the district? I'm interested to know what the relation between the city and the district is in terms of that particular process.
So the actual mechanism for the district to exist is a municipal code that was adopted to allow them to be formed. The city is actually a member of the district, because you own property in the district. Beyond that, I know Tom Liao, if you know, that was a, that was a previous administration, right?
Okay.
If I have the answer on that.
We'll have to do a trip up to Healdsburg and find out.
Have to look in that.
Okay, thank you for your time.
I want to get a councilmember Aguilar next, please.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. Thank you, Morgan. It's been a pleasure to work with you and the Community Benefit District. My question is with regards to ambassadors, and there are some questions with regards from the community. What are the hours of operations? Are they Monday through Friday, 8 to 5? And is there, the other question is, is there, you mentioned a plan to have them go into the weekend. What does that, what does that look like?
So thank you for your question. We're always trying to get the word out. From 6:00 to 9:00, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday, we have safety ambassadors on duty. From 7:00 to 3:30, seven days a week, we have cleaning ambassadors on duty. And what I see the gap to be is, we do not have a safety ambassador in the mornings on Saturdays and Sundays. What that would look like, that would look like the council approving 95% of the cost of that, and then the SLEA Board approving 5%. I think the average, I think the cost annually for a full-time safety ambassador is about $45,000. And the tricky thing with it too, though, is it's very hard to find part-time people. So right now, we, we are, we have two full-time safety ambassadors, and then one ambassador that does, or three full-time and one ambassador that does four shifts. So adding a Saturday, Sunday would create a position for three shifts, but that's still not a full-time position.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for highlighting that. And I just wanted to say, it's been a pleasure working with you to bring the first, the inaugural prize to San Leandro ever, and sending out those prospectus to sponsors to help get funding. I had a great time while I was studying abroad and working a full-time job in Boston and collaborating with you, and putting together a whole list of entertainers, and piecing that all together was a lot of hard work. I don't know how you do it, but I commend you, and I can't wait to do it again. So thank you so much.
Great.
At this point in time, I'll just look down. Any additional questions? I know that I made sure that people stuck to their time. So at this point in time, I'll just say thank you. You and I and others on the team do speak on a regular basis. So you've got my thoughts, you've got my appreciation, and do appreciate the regular updates, that, you know, if you have concerns, we close those loops and just keep moving this forward. And that's all I've got, that's all that we've got.
Thank you very much. See you next year.
See you next year. Okay, at this point in time, we're going to move to our second presentation. Item 9B, the Trash-Free San Leandro Initiative. And we've got Environmental Services Manager Carrie Parker introducing this item.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I am Carrie Parker, your new environmental services manager. And yes, let's be trash-free, but I'll explain that to you in a second. First, as you probably know, the newly-formed Public Works Department is, has four divisions, right? Led by Sheila Marquises, Engineering, Maintenance, Environmental Services, and Administration. I'm here to, for the first time, to talk about environmental services. So just to say, it's been me for just over six months. Last week was my six-month-aversary, and it's been trying to find out, you know, where are the edges of this? Environmental Services oversees solid waste, stormwater, and sustainability. So that means things like the municipal regional stormwater permit. We oversee that. We oversee the Climate Action Plan, its implementation and updating. And we oversee the big solid waste franchise with ACI. So that's kind of the big parameters, but there's a bunch of little ones under all of those. Just recently, I was able to hire, as my management analyst too, Kimberly Anderson. Is she right behind me? Who has been with the City of San Leandro for 10 years as a program specialist in housing. And I am so excited to have her now doing sustainability and that oversight of the Climate Action Plan and implementation and updating. So welcome, Kimberly. And pretty soon, I'm going to be hiring a Waste Reduction Program Coordinator. And I'm very excited about that. That is going to be mostly recycling programs and any sort of waste reduction programs that we can think of. So you're going to be hearing a lot more about that. And quickly, I want to do some background about me. I have 22 years of experience working as municipal, mostly in solid waste specialist. So luckily, that Waste Reduction Program- So luckily, that Waste Reduction Program Coordinator, I've been doing that job from memory, really, until now, until we hired someone. Okay. So, but the background of this led me to this trash-free initiative, and I just want to tell you something about it. Now, I wrote disposable, disposable generation, and what I mean by that is the generation of disposables, right? We do it all the time. We have this, we need to get that coffee, or we need to get that, I want that cake, and there's a fork that's plastic, but I just want it right now. And, and, and I use that plastic fork or that paper plate, and then for five minutes, maybe, because that cake was delicious, and then toss it out. Is it compostable? Is it recyclable? Not sure. And it's super convenient, right? You can do this just about anywhere. You've got that single-use item, and, and then you move on to the next thing, and, and you hope that the waste management professionals can recycle it, compost it, or do something with it, right? It's a little bit more difficult than that. At what cost? For 10 years, exactly, recycling, for 10 years, I was the event coordinator for California Coastal Cleanup in Alameda when I worked there. And what we, we were finding the things that accidentally didn't make it to the litter can, recycle can, whatever it was, perhaps because of active littering, right? Just neglect. Sometimes it just gets blown off, right? It's lightweight. We're talking about litter items that are typically lightweight. This California Coastal Cleanup is on the third Saturday of every September. And at that coastal cleanup, it's an international event. California is likely the largest, right, as a group, because we care about that so much. Where California is a watershed, and everything just goes right out to the ocean. So, the thing about coastal cleanup, and why I'm bringing it up, is that there's data collection that happens at that event that's pretty specific to what we're seeing that washes out to the bay and out to the ocean. And attendees, if you've ever attended a coastal cleanup, have, you try to keep data on everything it is that you're putting in your trash bag as you're picking it up. You usually have one recorder and a couple of trash pickers, right? And the things on this list, if you can't see it because it's tiny, are things like cigarette butts, beverage bottles, plastic bags, bottle caps, straw stirrers, et cetera. Now, it's the best trash collection for creating policy. I mean, the best data collection for creating policy, because we can see what's really on that that's actually washing out to the bay. And I'm just using last year's numbers just for, for illustration. If you've ever done a coastal cleanup, you know that the number-one thing picked up is cigarette butts. That's not for tonight's presentation. I don't have a solution for that yet. But often, these are the cigarette butts that are flicked out of windows, out of cars. They wash down the storm drain and go out to the bay. But as you can see on here, in food wrappers, bottle caps, beverage bottles, straw stirrers, and plastic bags, these are things that are typically foodware, right? Food wrappers. Even the number four, other waste, and number five, other, other waste in plastic and metal and paper, that's something that could have been part of one of those items. And I can't really tell what it is, and that's why they've marked it other waste. But most of the items on the list are food-related, food packaging. And this trash-free initiative is meant to kind of look at, what can we do about that? I want you to also notice that there's not many items on this list that are actually recyclable or compostable. And the bad news is, we cannot recycle nor compost our way out of this. And I can talk all day about what goes in the blue cart and what goes in the green cart, but really, if we're talking then, it's too late. We're at the moment of discard. And I urge, I'm bringing up this program and initiative for San Leandro, because I have been someone who has written, implemented, and enforced a foodware ordinance in the city of Alameda. And it was going fairly well. We passed that law in 2017. Enforcement began in 2018, and it was going along at a pretty good clip, and, and we were able to change things from plastic to compostable fiber. But then the pandemic happened, and I watched all of that work just literally float away, where not only were, did takeout become king, but it was not politically positive to look at restaurants as, you know, oh, no, you're supposed to have compostable fiber, you're supposed to do this. Nobody was going to write a citation to a restaurant that may have closed or lost, you know, lost all their money during the pandemic. So during the pandemic, I thought, what is the answer to this? And I came up with this trash-free idea with a couple of colleagues of mine. We've been hearing about zero waste for a long time. What does that mean? Zero waste, truly, zero waste? Well, no, I mean, you know, there's always a little bit of waste. There's always something to throw out. There's something we can't recycle or compost. So I want everyone to think about, how do we produce less waste? How do we do that? So the emphasis is not on these restaurants and what foodware they're passing out, but what do we ask for? What are we making these restaurants give us? So, trash-free is about choosing reusables for all of us, right? For everyone here in this room and anyone in the sound of my voice. Wherever possible, choose reusables. Now, what I mean by that is go to the place, when I'm thinking about, oh, I really like some coffee right now. How do I have a trash-free coffee, right? If I want to go have a trash-free lunch, where do I go to have a trash-free lunch? You can think of some of these places already, but it's the idea of reducing the generation upstream, rather than waiting for, can I compost it, or can I recycle it, right? So it's a personal choice. I, all of these pictures of food, except for the coffee, are from dining establishments in San Leandro. And there are plenty of places, and I know you can think of them off the top of your head, that offer reusables for dine-in. Starbucks, however, I want to just, and I want to put this in front of you for a second. Starbucks is a potentially trash-free restaurant. The reason why is trash, Starbucks will fill your cup and, you know, with the latte that you want, and it will give you a 10-cent discount. If you, if you show your, that you're, you know, the app with, that you're a Starbucks customer, it will give you 25 bonus points, so that if you get four drinks, you're going to get one drink free. Because I guess they give a free drink every 100 points. That's something to think about. Trash-free. So they are incentivizing less trash for being trash-free. So I just want you to think about, they also sell reusables right there at the, so they can capture that dollar of yours. Another thing to think about is that it's using trash-free reusables. So what I found out just recently is that Sparkle Reusables provides dishware for the San Leandro Senior Center via Spectrum. So those lunches have reduced significant amount of trash in the two-plus years they've been using these. So they give out bags, dishware, and it's, the numbers are a reduction in how much it took to produce any of those disposables. So that is exciting. We're going to continue on with that, with a Public Works Lunch pretty soon with Sparkle Reusables. So I've also thought maybe we can support the restaurants with trash-free certification. Give them little window clings for their windows and show where you can have a trash-free lunch or trash-free coffee. I've suggested a few possible certifying, certifying restaurants here. So honestly, my main message is to choose reusables wherever possible. What creative ways can you avoid disposables? And sometimes you need it. I understand that. But how can you reduce it? Even one day a week? I'm not, I'm just going to use reusables today. Or a whole week out of the month? Or how can you bring your own kit, bring your own cup, keep utensil kits with you? And, and that is my explanation of trash-free San Leandro.
Thank you so much for your presentation. At this point in time, we'll move to Councilmember Questions, if there are any. Just checking to see Councilmember Aguilar, if you've got any questions. Seeing none, okay. So let's move to public comment on this item, and then we'll come back to council discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no public comment in person, but we have two hands up online.
Please proceed.
Douglas Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. Well, what an exciting development in San Leandro. Welcome. I don't know if you're a resident of San Leandro. How familiar are you with San Leandro? I think you'll find that San Leandro is a very environmentally friendly town. There's organizations like Friends of San Leandro Creek, San Leandro 2050, Butterfly Garden, Homegrown Habitats, lots of great things going on. You know, we planted 1,000 trees, lots of amazing things going on here. So I guess one of my questions is, to what extent you are, you know, familiar with them and how plugged you are to programs like Stop Waste and the Alameda County Clean Water Program, Holy H2O, you know, just so we're not reinventing the wheel so much, but working in conjunction with, among all these organizations. You know, I, I think you'd, you'd probably know that, that we lost our Sustainability Manager, but one of the exciting things that Dr. Faymark did was to bring initiatives around, along the lines of, of reuse. And so I would like to see things like, you know, the clothing co-op. We have an art kind of co-op thing that goes on once a month that could be even strengthened a little bit. Bringing the electricians to town maybe once a month, so we can bring our appliances in and get them fixed instead of sending them to the refill, to the, the fill. I think there's lots of possibilities like that that I would love to see supported in San Leandro. So let's reduce, let's reuse, let's be environmentally great, and look forward to hearing more about your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ginny Madsen, you may unmute yourself.
So I didn't expect to say anything else tonight, but I just have to say how glad I am to hear this. I, everything has to be used at least twice in my life. I use every piece of plastic that comes into my life at least twice. And if people just did that, there would be less. But I know I'm alone, and it's partly getting the word out. So I wish you luck. This is important. It sounds mundane, but it is the root of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment?
So we will close public comment and come back for council discussion on this item. Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Very excited about this. Can you share a little bit about what, at what stage of the project this is?
This would be the kickoff.
Got it.
Right here.
And, and what, what would help it be successful?
I am hoping to do a whole bunch of public outreach. I'm going to do some sort of kickoff at the Cherry Festival to talk more about this, likely hand out utensil kits, and try to find ways to, to empower people to be trash-free.
And can, as I now currently sit on the Stop Wastes Board as well as the Recycling Board, and I know that some of this idea, the ordinance that was passed in Alameda, we've talked a lot about that, some of the struggles that the cities are facing. I was looking into potentially trying to bring that to San Leandro, but is it actually effective? And, and obviously, I think you would be an expert in that. But can you share a little bit about some of the projects you've done in the past with Stop Waste and how, because they have similar programming, and, and maybe how this, maybe Stop Waste could help support this program as well, and, and maybe this is something we could bring to them?
Absolutely. I worked with Stop Waste for 14 years when I worked for the city of Alameda. San Leandro is a member agency of Stop Waste and the As Is Out City of Alameda, and we did all sorts of projects together. I did assist in helping to form the Model Reusables Ordinance, and definitely considered, what could we do here? I, I think that I would like to try this first before we try to write an ordinance for San Leandro. I'm not sure it will be necessary. If we can talk people out of their disposable habits, it'd be a really exciting thing. I've done programs, all sorts of programs with Stop Waste. I work on construction and demolition programs. I'm looking to update San Leandro's ordinance here. And I have, let's see, anything you can probably think of. I've been very involved in the SB 1383 kind of implementation for Alameda County, and Stop Waste is excited to be working on this with us here in San Leandro. So I'm, I'm part of that. I visit their offices as much as I can. I was there last week. So yes, they're all my friends, and I'm ready to, ready to go.
That's fantastic. And then I'm, I'm always advocating for the schools, and I know that when I have done reu, programming for composting or reusables, being environmentally friendly, I always work through the kids, because sometimes kids are the best teachers of their adults. And so if there's a way to be able to partner with the school district, I'm sure you're already talking to the team, but that's usually one of the most impactful ways. Thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
Okay. If someone can tell me if online, Councilmember Aguilar is fine, okay, so say, oh, one more? So I've got Councilmember Votis Walton, please.
Just wanted to welcome you to the city. Thank you for your work, and you have a fantastic member of your team, and looking forward to seeing how we can be of, of service. I don't have any questions or comments. I'm supportive and excited to see how this gets implemented. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. So with everyone having spoken, I'll just offer a few thoughts. The first, really appreciative of the data. Having done a number of these community cleanups, I can vouch that cigarette butts are the number-one offender, whether it's on the coastline or in other places. They're small, but they are shockingly prevalent, followed by food wrappers. And a lot of those disposable cookies, whatever blows out of van doors or intentionally gets dropped, whatever the case, they're quite prevalent in the city. So thank you for the data, actual hard data, that aligns with anecdotal experience. The second thing is I'm grateful that you have filled the Management Analyst Two position, right? Dr. Mock had filled that position, and there's a number of community members that know her from that position that she filled, and now it's great that we have filled that position. So we can kind of check that off the boxes as something that the community members, some of whom spoke today, have asked for, and it's good to see that that has been accomplished. I think that the bigger-picture questions that I have, I think, right a little bit off of what Vice Mayor had asked, which is, how are we going to action this? What I, what I heard today was vision. It's a dream. And I don't know if you've given some thought already. It sounds like there'll be some action at the Cherry Festival, but do you, have you laid out, you know, a multi-year plan, or is it just still in the infancy?
Still in infancy. I just got here, and I think I've been busy rather than laying out the plan. However, I did hand over about 125 stickers to the Eco Club earlier tonight. We intend to not just give out stickers so you can put them on your car, although I'm imagining we'll find them there. I think I want to try to figure out how to incentivize trash-free San Leandro for all sorts of types of single use. So I want you to imagine not just coffee, but boba tea, or any place that they visit. I was, in Alameda, I was able to get a student group to put together a boba bottle and straw and get boba tea shops to incentivize that for the students that were near the high school, or for the, who would walk in with their stickered cup and get an extra discount on that drink. So there are kind of multi-layers to this, and I, we're going to see what we can do if we can certify restaurants so that we put them on a map. If we can certify restaurants so that we put them on a map so that you can find that place for trash-free coffee, trash-free lunch, trash-free dinner. That'll be what we'll do. We'd also like to see some sort of reusable takeout system. I'm going to be exploring that over the next several months. So that, let's pretend it's the downtown area. If you get a takeout meal, you'll get it in reusable, let's say, steel containers with a silicone lid on them. And when you're done, you can bring it back to that restaurant and dump it in the dirty's pail or bring it to some sort of centralized bins that are in the downtown area. So we can all share them at scale. I'd really love to see that. So.
I love thinking. In the short term, one of the things that we learned from a Stop Waste, Stop Waste presentation to the Alameda Mayor's Conference is some of the wish cycling around paper, paper food containers that, if they're plastic lined, they're not really compostable. We might be putting them in the green bin, but that's really not the right place for them. Would you agree with that assessment?
Correct. I was just speaking about this with a colleague of mine. If you imagine that a compost pile is a recipe, like a cookie recipe, right? And a cookie recipe can have a pinch of salt in it and makes it better, right? A compost pile can have a pinch of, can have a pinch of foodware, of paperware. And the rest of it needs to be food and plants and things like that to make a good compost pile. If you put a cup of salt in those cookies, it'll ruin it. If we put that much compostable fiber containers in the compost, it ruins it. So before they start scaling it off, right? And throwing it in the landfill, let's stop the flow.
So I'm going to pause my comments. I'm going to go to council member Azavito and then I'll wrap up with one or two last thoughts. Councilmember Azavito.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. I just thought of this when you were speaking, when you guys were just talking. I think might be a good place to partner was with ice cream shops. You might be able to use that for disposable. They can put it in a certain container. Or we might have a certain system where we have the certain containers and we could go to different restaurants and use that for a plate or for take home or something. And they give you a 10 cent discount or something. I was just thinking of something like that.
Absolutely. We encourage people to get their ice cream on an ice cream cone.
Or an ice cream.
Eat that container, right?
Yeah.
Okay, my, the last set of thoughts here really go to what you describe as a very compelling vision and really want to think about how we help make that happen. I'm just so excited to hear about the stickers that you gave out to the high school students. Enrolling youth in the community is a very powerful mechanism, particularly if you can leverage their use of social media. To convey a consistent brand repeated over and over and over. And by over and over, I mean for like the next five years. Just one message over and over and over with three explanations of how we make it happen. I like the idea of scale by having organizations, particularly in a geographically centralized area, agree to a method, much in the way that those reusable containers are used at the senior center. I can't remember if folks put a deposit on that container so that they're encouraged to bring it back. But I do know that just having watched people come back with their containers, there's a lot of compliance with actually reusing those containers. And that, to me, is very powerful. So that's my encouragement. My encouragement is pick one message and repeat it over and over and over with three very specific implementations. Because I do think that this, this is compelling and it, we can drive substantial change. So with that being said, we will move, thank you for your presentation. We'll move on to our next agenda item. In this case, we're moving on to an action item. Our action item involves a resolution with respect to Calpers. It is a relatively perfunctory resolution. We've done something like this before. I think everyone was on the council here when we did this before, not positive. We've got Emily Hung, who is not presenting. So my notes are incorrect. And I'm sorry, I do not remember your name. If you could please introduce yourself.
I'm Ruby Andrews. I'm a senior HR analyst with the city.
Well, welcome. And we look forward to your brief presentation.
So I'm here tonight to present an action item for consideration, which is an amendment to the city's contract with Calpers to update the cost share percentage for members of the unrepresented executive safety employees group, which includes the police chief. For reference, cost sharing refers to employees paying an additional percentage towards the employer's portion of the retirement contribution rate. Calpers requires agencies to go through a contract amendment process whenever there is a change to the cost share percentage for an unrepresented employee group. The cost sharing provision was first approved by the city council through a contract amendment in 2023. And in 2024, the council approved a 0.5% cost share increase for the unrepresented executive safety employees group aligning with the police chief's employment agreement. This agreement also stipulates another 0.5% cost share increase effective July 1st, 2025, resulting in a total employee contribution rate of 2%. The city council is being asked to adopt a resolution of intent to amend the contract for an additional 0.5% cost share for the unrepresented executive safety employees. So tonight, we're introducing the ordinance for its first reading. And human resources will return on May 19th for the second and final reading as required by Calpers guidelines. I can take any questions.
Mr. Mayor, there is no public comment.
Seeing as there's no public comment, I'll close public comment. And then we'll come to council members for questions, deliberation, if any, or I will take a motion. Councilmember Evitas Walton? Oh, sorry.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to move, to adopt a resolution and intention to introduce an ordinance to approve an amendment to the contract between the Board of Administration of the California Public's Employee Retirement System and the city of San Leandro.
Councilmember Azavito?
And I would like to second it.
So we've had the motion by Councilmember Evitas Walton, a second from Councilmember Azavito. I see no further discussion. Just trying to confirm that we do not have a hand from Councilmember Aguilar. We do not. So let us proceed to a vote.
Councilmember Aguilar, your vote, please.
Aye.
All votes are in. Councilmember Aguilar, yes. Councilmember Azavito, yes. Councilmember Viveros Walton, yes. Vice Mayor Bowen, yes. And Mayor Gonzalez, yes. Motion passes 502 with councilmembers Bolt and Simon absent.
Okay, so at this point in time, we'll move to item number 11. Are there any item elevens? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item number 12. It's opportunity for council to offer discussions on meetings attended, items of community interest. Please proceed, Councilmember Evitas Walton.
Thank you. I just, one event that I attended and then I wanted to alert just the community of office hours that I'll be holding on Thursday, April 17th. I attended the Centro Legal de la Raza anniversary dinner. It's their annual event. Centro Legal de la Raza provides assistance. They have a contract with the city and they provide assistance on housing-related issues for residents who have any questions. They continue to be a resource to the community. It was a lovely event and their executive director is actually a resident of San Leandro. And I also wanted to alert, not alert, just let folks know. I'll be holding office hours at the farmer's market from 5:00 to 7:00 PM this upcoming Wednesday, April 30th. I'll be joined by our city clerk, who will be taking questions on redistricting. If any folks out there have any questions or concerns about it, our clerk will be there as well. And I'll be there to help either direct towards resources or any other city-related question that I can either pass along or help folks out. And that is it for now. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other announcements? Once, going twice.
Okay, so with that, I'll move to my announcements just very quickly. I did visit with Human Services Director Lobodon, the Fairmont, I'll just call it the Fairmont Complex, with various folks from Behavioral Health Services for Alameda County, out of the group, Alameda County Health, as well as with representatives from the Alameda County Health System. Found the experience rather insightful with respect to the breadth of services ranging from the most acute and severe intake of folks in severe mental health crisis, all the way down through individuals who need sustained support, but that are not in acute crisis. In particular, these services all for individuals who qualify for medical assistance.
Okay, so I'm going to pause my comments and go to Councilmember Aguilar.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. On Wednesday, April 9th, I attended the 1,135th meeting of the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District. Where in the operations report in March, the first detection of West Nile virus in California was made in Castro Valley from a dead crow. A second West Nile virus positive crow was collected from the same location. Just days later, operations staffs responded by checking sources for colics mosquitoes and several mile radii around the collection site. Nor larvae of this genre were collected. Adult mosquito trapping in the area by the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District Lab recovered very low numbers of colics mosquitoes with none testing positive for West Nile virus. Inspection and treatments for potential West Nile virus. Vaccine mosquitoes were conducted countywide during the month and will continue throughout the season. Early larval treatments are important to limit the number of adult mosquitoes entering the environment. So just be aware of your surroundings and make sure you're using mosquito repellent. I, we also did discuss the, we did have the oath of office for the Office of Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees. And we also went through the first draft of the 2024-25 budget, which was just for discussion only. And then on that Thursday, I attended the National League of Cities LGBTQLO monthly meeting. And on the following Wednesday, I'm trying to look at my calendar to bring up this information. I attended the farmer's market, which was on April, Wednesday, April 16th, with our city manager, Janelle Cameron, and city clerk, Kelly Clancy. And we were informing folks of the public hearing with regards to the California Voting Rights Act and the processes that we, that we will be going through to hear from the public. And that concludes my, my reports. Thank you, Mayor.
You're most welcome. Councilmember Azavito, please.
Yes. On April 14th, I attended an EBDA operation and maintenance meeting. And on April 17th, I attended the EBDA commission meeting. And this Wednesday, I'll be tabling, I'll be having a table at the farmer's market, answering people's questions and seeing the way, any way I can help them. That's it.
Okay, thank you. So then I will conclude with a couple of more things. On Thursday, the 11th, this coming Thursday, the 11th, at 11:00 AM, we'll have our next installment of the mayoral update. Among other things, we'll be specifically addressing some of the questions that were submitted to us through social media. We continue as a city council, as a city, and it will be coming next to finance committee to work on our 2526 budget. And so I think this will be an opportunity for us to explore how that budget reflects some of the potential challenges that we could be facing heading into the future. We know that sales tax revenue is down. And so we will definitely be paying close attention. We encourage members of the public to, to join us for those discussions and future discussions here over the next month or two. We also have a little piece of information to share because I think it has been repeated several times in this chamber that there is data which shows that certain ethnic groups are disproportionately stopped by San Leandro Police Department with the implication, I'll just say it's, it appears to be implied that there is some sort of racial profiling occurring in San Leandro. Those sorts of assertions really need to be evaluated in the context of some sort of scientific analysis. The independent police officer, police, independent police auditor for the city of San Leandro has actually undertaken that work by looking at, an evaluation, for instance, take cars with tinted windows where there's no way that someone can tell who's actually being stopped until you go up to the vehicle and ask someone to put down the window. By looking at stops that occur at night versus the stops that occur by day. And that type of analysis has shown that there is no indication of racial profiling happening in San Leandro. That information is, I think, something that's, it's scientific, it's statistical. And we need to continue being true to what the data show as opposed to creating potential impressions about what could be happening. We have done analysis and we feel very comfortable with what that data analysis is showing. I think the last thing that I will offer is that any of a variety of organizations, I think council member Aguilar mentioned, Mosquito Abatement District, a number of government organizations are going through their budget setting process. So whether it's Bay Area Air Quality Management District that I sit on, the Mosquito Abatement District, or other organizations. So for the public, if you're interested in the budgeting process for any of those organizations, this is the time of year where it's good to just kind of raise your hand, send your council members questions, comments, suggestions about our budget or the budgets for other organizations on which we represent. And with that, we'll move to item 13, which is adjournment. Now, today, we did have the passing of Pope Francis. And while Pope Francis is not a member of the city of San Leandro, there have been many people that have posted throughout the country and throughout the world recognizing Pope Francis's life of service. And in particular, taking on the name Francis because St. Francis of Assisi, after whom the city of San Francisco is named after. St. Francis was an individual that was focused on the poor, the people in need, the people that were cast out, the people that were forgotten by society. And in taking on that name, Pope Francis focused the Catholic Church's efforts. And that's for many Catholic churches here in San Franc, in San Leandro, San Francisco, California, United States, or throughout the world. This constant message of take care of the downtrodden, take care of the poor, take care of the immigrants, take care of the imprisoned. And so with this approach of leadership by focusing on the most vulnerable, I think it would be honorable to close our meeting in recognition of what he has done and how that influenced a number of people in San Leandro. So we'll take one minute of silence, or let's take 10 seconds of silence.